Oh Pastor Jackson will lead us in an invocation followed by the flag salute. So I will ask all those that are able to stand to please do so. Thank you. Good evening.
Father, we come before you. You said you were to acknowledge you in all of our ways and you would direct our path. And this is what Baldwin Park needs, your divine direction. We asking you to give our city council wisdom, knowledge, and understanding in how to run the city and the best for the community. Thank you for the businesses that are in our community. Bless our businesses. Bless our school and put your hand of protection around about our children, Lord God, in breaking the power of drugs and gangs and anything that would distract them from further on in their education. And therefore, Lord God, as we acknowledge you, you will direct our path, for we need you in this time and season, Lord, because many things are happening around the world. So give us the wisdom that we need. In the name of the Lord, we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. At this point, please face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty, thank you very much. Good evening to all the audience that are currently with us. At this point, I will ask any council members wish to close on anyone's behalf?
But if I may make a couple of announcements. First of all, I just wanted to welcome everyone. The Baldwin Park Unified School District is currently looking for a new superintendent and they have an open forum. They want to invite the community to come and give input. They're currently interviewing different superintendents, but they definitely want community members involved. So that will happen Wednesday, March 19th, 2014, at Violent Elementary School. So anyone interested in giving input is welcome. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you. I want to also open up the Ballpark City Council meeting concurrent with the finance and also with the housing department. And I will read something that were required by law to read, which this is to announce as required by government code, section 5495, 4.3, members of the city council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and the Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening. And each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting and $50 attending the Finance Authority. So just want to note that. At this point, I'm going to have Madam City Clerk or City Treasurer take a roll call.
Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Cruz Vaca?
Present.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Present.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Patten, Vicaga Pacheco?
Here.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Let me just ask for a few more minutes. I wanted to just publicly thank Juan's Restaurant. As we all know, they've been here for quite a while now. One restaurant was on Main Street and they just closed their doors, which makes me very sad. But we definitely want to thank him for bringing recognition to Baldwin Park. He was responsible for having the Nopal Festival every year and has been very involved with the community, sponsoring a lot of, you know, youth programs and senior programs. So publicly, we want to acknowledge his work here and just wish him luck in his new endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmember Susan Rubio. Alright, anyone else have anything else? If not, we're going to, I'm going to go ahead and go into the proclamations and presentations. The first thing that we have is certificates of recognition to winners of adult education, which is important. It's by the Adult School in Baldwin Park. And we're going to be presenting these certificates based on essays. The theme was "What Adult Education Means to Me." And over the years, they presented excellent essays that have been read and obviously they have been printed. And I just want to thank all the individuals that participated in that. And also Director Dr. Kerr that's here with us, thank you very much, Denise Turner, and all the teachers that are part of making this happen. So at this point, I will ask all the following individuals to come up here. First one is Claudia Lisbeth Rivera. She could please make her way up here. Linda Castañeda. Laura Maras. Gita Machena. Yubri Aquino. Diego Sanchez. Willia Reynolds. Okay. Oh yeah. Oh good. Hey girl, what's up? Who's Claudia?
Pleasure.
Thank you.
Linda?
Pleasure.
There you go.
What?
Yes. Okay, here you go. Laura, thank you. Pleasure. Good pleasure. Thank you. Let's get everyone.
Mayor, can we have their teachers come up?
Oh yeah, let's have the teachers up here. Hey Denise, do we have the teachers here? Let's do that. Let's stay on here real quick. Thank you. I'll stand in the back. Let's stay one here and I guess, let's do two rows. Can we do it from the back? Yes.
Have everybody look at front? Right here.
Got everyone?
Wait, wait. I'm sorry.
Okay, we don't want you to be hidden.
It says one, two, and three.
El taconazo.
Someone coming? One, two, and three.
Awesome, alrighty. Thank you. Thank you. Do you want to say some words about the program? Come out here, give them the mic.
I'm Marc Steinle and I teach high school diploma at the Adult School and GED. And if you don't know, the Adult Education Program in Baldwin Park is one of the finest in California and as Dr. Kerr continually reminds me, also one of the finest in the United States. So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let me rephrase that. The best program in the United States. We really do have a great program. We have an older adult program. We have a career technical education program that has top quality programs at very, very low cost. High school diploma, ESL programs, again at minimal cost. So if you need any of those things, please take advantage of our services. If you've been a beneficiary of one of those things, we'd really appreciate your continued support, particularly as we have a new superintendent coming onboard. And we're hopeful he'll be as supportive, or she'll be as supportive as Marc Kavarna has been for our program. So, thank you.
Alright, the next certificates that we have is the certificate recognition to Willa Reynolds, okay, for being recognized as Club Woman of the Year for Ballpark's Women's Club. So let's give her a great hand.
I've been in Baldwin Park probably 45 years.
Forty-five years.
I am so proud to be a member of the Baldwin Park Women's Club. If any of you women don't belong, you're missing out. I have so many friends. My family doesn't live here, but I have a family with the Baldwin Park Women's Club. You want to join? How can you?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, come on in, Moni. Got it? Alright, thank you.
Mayor, can I say a few words?
Sure, absolutely.
I was fortunate enough to attend the essay awards at the Adult School. And I want to say that all the essays were so inspiring that it brought tears in our eyes from Gita, who's representing the seniors with her fabulous story, to the young man who's been here just a short time taking ESL and spoke and read English fluently. So I commend the Adult School. I know a lot of people that have been through that program. My sister was a teacher there for a long time. And I know what kind of programs you have. Thank you very much to the Ballpark School District and the Board, because you make it possible. A lot of cities do not have adult school anymore. So thank you to all of you.
Thank you. Yes, is this it right now?
Mayor, I just want to say a few words as well. I just, you know, want to speak to the Women's Club, you know, and I'm so proud of you, Willa, for getting that award. But, you know, I want to talk a little bit about the, all the efforts that they have going on in Baldwin Park. And they do a lot of good for their community in terms of scholarships, veteran services. And so we want to really thank the Women's Club for being out there and doing all that you do. So thank you.
Oh, and also, if you're free tomorrow, there's a wonderful scholarship dinner at the Women's Club. It starts at 4:30 to 7:30. A lot of us will be cooking early in the morning. And it is a wonderful dinner, as well as raising money for a lot of the scholarships that we give out as part of the Women's Club to our Sierra Vista, our Ballpark High School, and our North Park students as well. So please try to attend or donate something. It's very much appreciated. There's a lot of hard work that goes into a lot of these events. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Alrighty, the next presentation that we have is the certificate recognition to Ballpark High School Wrestling Team for placing at the CIF Tournament. So why don't we have Tony Gonzalez? Tony? What's that? Oh, that's right, you're Sierra Vista. That's right, okay. Okay, where's the Ballpark, is the Ballpark High School coach here? Okay, alright. Do me fair. Come on up here so you can explain to the audience. Sorry about that. Say your name.
So yeah, my name's Eric Tapia.
Thank you, Eric.
The girls' head coach at Ballpark. And we recently had a first-year wrestler, hasn't been wrestling more than three months, and she just comes out with a bang. She took CIF. And then she took the Masters Tournament. And that qualified her for state where she took fifth.
Wow, that's awesome.
And she's currently being offered a scholarship, athletic and academic scholarship to the University of the Cumberland's. Hopefully she'll take it.
Awesome. That's great. Thank you very much. I guess I'll read this off real quick.
Yeah, go.
Okay, let me read this off. Thank you, Coach. Angel Ochoa, where is she? Where's Angel Ochoa? Huh? Where's? Oh, I got Sierra Vista. What's going on here, Tony? Mind you, and I got my glasses, brother. Okay, what's going on here? Okay, here we go. Alright, so, well, before I go on, I just want to also thank Luis Viegas. Where's Luis at? Thank you, Luis, for giving me a call. Luis is also resident at Ballpark, but part of the animal humane. So if you have any positive feedback, give it to this man, okay? He's really good. He called me up, luckily, he called me up at 3:00 in the morning. He says, "I hope I didn't wake you up," but he was excited about this, okay? That's a joke. Okay. Oh, I gotta get you the cage back, by the way. Alright. Okay, let me read this off, which reads, "The Baldwin Park High School Wrestling Team, the city council congratulates you for a successful season and commend you for your hard work and dedication. Congratulations for being named the 2014 CIF Champions, Master CIF Champions, and for placing fifth in the state CIF Championship Tournament. Thank you for all the favorable on behalf of the council members." So we're going to get a picture, a separate picture with all the team members to place it in the city newsletter that goes out. And as you know, you probably already saw your names up in the marquee at Morgan Park. So I want to thank you. Okay, the first one I'll call up here is Jessica Nicole Viegas. Please come on up here. We'll have Erica Tapia. Eric Tapia. Is that Eric? Sorry about that. Raul Tapia. Albert Villafon. Oh, just one? That's Jessica. That's Jessica Nicole? They're all attached together. Okay.
By the way, she's an incredible singer. She won, she won the Women's Club scholarship, the regional. She won that on last Friday. Beautiful.
Does a proud dad want to come up? Does a proud dad want to come up and join us?
Come on in, Eric. Let's get our picture, you guys. Sorry. Thanks, brother. Thank you. I'll stand right here and I'll see you guys, okay?
Ready? One, two, and three. One, one.
Alright, thank you. Thank you. Want to say some words? Come on up. Say some words. Do you want to thank the audience?
Hello. I'm Jessica Viegas. And they put me on the spot. I don't know what to say. I just want to thank my coaches a lot. They mean a lot to me. They've taught me so much and they deal with a lot of my issues, especially with learning how to wrestle, because I never wanted to wrestle. And then I did. And it's really fun and I really like it. I just want to thank you all for being here and stuff. Thank you.
Okay, so this is, this is SB, you know?
Mayor?
Oh, you turn 18? Today's your birthday?
Today's your birthday.
We're going to sing Happy Birthday. Come here. Come on, come on, Jessica. Alright, on the count of three, we're going to sing Happy Birthday to Jessica. Ready? One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Jessica. Happy birthday to you.
Hold on, we have some, a council member goes back in.
Also, I'd like to congratulate Jessica. She has many talents. On Friday, she, or last week, she won actually the regional for the Women's Club in the music competition representing Baldwin Park. And so that's a big deal. Beautiful voice, incredible voice, very talented.
Okay. Oh, go ahead. Thank you. Okay, now Tony Gonzalez. Okay, brother, sorry about that. They were all mixed up together. What happened?
Mr. Tapia.
Oh, okay. Hold on, forgot. Raul Tapia, come on up here. Hey?
Eric.
And Eric Tapia? Okay, these are the coaches that made it happen and supported Jessica. Thank you. Come on up here. Brandon Lopez, come on up here. Okay, which other two? Alrighty, thank you. Alright, thank you. Okay, hey, thank you. Okay, do we have certificates? Yes, sir.
Do we have certificates for another group? No, I don't think there's another group.
There is, I think so.
Thank you, guys. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. While they sort this... While they, oh, I just, Mayor, I just wanted to acknowledge Luis Viegas. Not only is his daughter a standout, but Luis, you know, we want to recognize him too for all that he does on behalf of the Animal Humane Shelter, Animal Control. And I've called him numerous, I've called on him numerous times regarding stray animals, rescues, and he's always so responsive. And I've seen him interact with these animals. And there's a real care and a real regard for these animals. So definitely want to recognize you for all that you do too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And next month, we'll have the Baldwin Park High School Soccer, because they are the champions. So I think that happened about two years ago, I believe, some two or three years ago. So we're looking forward to bringing them on the agenda and posting their actual picture along the freeway, hopefully on one of the digital LED billboards this time around, because there is that capacity for us to do that this time around. So, alright, if, no other presentations?
Mayor, just real quickly, before we move forward, I just wanted to also congratulate the Baldwin Park American Little League for their opening ceremony this weekend. And so I just want to wish them good luck in the new season. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, absolutely.
I'd like to congratulate the Sierra Vista Wrestling Team. I believe it's the 10th year, correct me, Tony, undefeated league champs. And we are recognizing them next meeting.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Tony, as always. Alrighty, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public communication. You have approximately three minutes. Please state your name. Thank you. Good evening.
Alright, Tony. Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council, for giving us this opportunity. First, I just wanted to talk, Angel Ochoa here is a junior at Sierra Vista. And she also competes in the girls' wrestling, where she was the CIF champion, runner-up at the Masters in the fifth in the state, which qualified her for the national tournament. So the national tournament is going to be next weekend in Oklahoma City. So we're just trying to get some donations to, you know, the trip is a costly trip. And we've been spending a lot of our money and we're down to like next to nothing to try to get her to go to this tournament. She's also a softball player at Sierra Vista, a great athlete. But for girls' wrestling, it's a huge opportunity for girls now to get into athletic scholarships. Title IX being that is allowing girls to actually gain these scholarships. And currently, she's as well been offered some opportunities. But being able to wrestle in Oklahoma would be a huge opportunity for her to showcase her talents. So Angel, you'd like to come up as well?
Come on, Angel. You can do it.
And just to let everybody know, California is one of two states that has single champions. They don't have divisions. So being a girls' state placer for Baldwin Park and Sierra Vista is a huge accomplishment, because we're talking, there's over 900 schools that wrestle. And these girls came out in the top five. So that's really, really something to... So I have, I have some information here. If anybody'd like to donate, I'll leave it here. They can make checks payable to Tough Kids Senior. But that will, we are looking for donations to help her fund the trip.
Okay, alright. Thank you. Thank you very much. Tony, you can pass that information this way so we can... Oh, we do? Okay. Thank you. Alright, thank you very much. Alright, moving along with public communication.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. I'm Mr. Luna. Number one, I would like to not pay any taxes to any city or any kind of taxes, period. But I need an exemption. You people give exemptions? 75,000 people in Baldwin Park would like the same exemption you give to these corporations. They pay very little taxes. How many times does we people got to tell you, you need tax revenue? That means income from businesses that make money, not $2. They make millions of dollars. And you people give these people exemptions. This is terrible. Number one, you cannot have people work here free. You people don't work free, do you? I'm pretty sure the police department doesn't work free. Who's paying for all these benefits? You're going to be like the city of LA, raise a penny tax to do this, to do that. We don't need more taxes. We need income from corporations, big business. That doesn't mean $200. That means tons of money. If you give it away, you should be able to give it to all of us citizens of Baldwin Park. These people pay taxes just like you corporations do. You think they're exempt? No. We'll hit the taxpayer. He's down here. Well, you know, we want to be a corporation too. Maybe we ought to file for a tax-exempted nonprofit city, 75,000 people. Maybe that's what we need to tell you guys. Where are you going to get all this money we're going to lose on this so-called project? I know, you're going to tax them and them and all of us. We're saying, why lose 500,000? Next year, the taxes property goes up, that might go up to 600,000. Why are you giving this away? You people can't understand numbers. You give it away, somebody's got to pay. And as sure as heck ain't you guys up there getting a deduction in pay. You're going to give this gentleman an increase for working two jobs. Okay, who's going to pay for that? Are you guys paying for it and none of us? We're all going to pay for it. This 600 to 500,000 would take care of some of that. Give us our 4th of July back, our people walk. All these projects these young people take, who do you think pays for it? You think all the corporations run down here and say, "Hey, I'm Kaiser. I'll give you 500 million." I'm the Harrington Hotel down here, or whatever it's called. Have they gave you guys any tax money? What do they give you? A few bucks? And you guys seem to be happy. You are not a very happy group of people. The people before you did the same thing. And you know what? The mayor keeps saying, "I'm going to raise taxes. This city will never go bankrupt." At the rate you're going, you're pushing that step further and further, closer and closer. Can't you guys understand that? You're going to be like the city of LA. They're going to get to the point where they're going to have to raise taxes on everything. That's what you're going to do. And who pays? Us out here. Not only me, but all of you. And I'm tired of paying taxes. And there's my three minutes, as usual.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Alright, moving along with public communication.
Thomas Carey, former resident here. You're still giving away the city, like he says. The youth is the ones, the ones that stay here are going to have to pay for that. 2% simple interest. I wish I could get a loan like that. But then I'm not a corporation. Like he says, if the people go into an LLC or nonprofit and that, is that what people have to do to survive? It may very well come to that. This Rome Project, how are you going to monitor how many people live in there? You know, these people, some of them, you look at the houses here in Baldwin Park, they're living in garages here. You say there's 75,000 people here. Well, that's 75,000 that you know about. What about the other 30,000 that are living in garages and illegal conversions all over the city? And they're out And they're out there. What about that? You getting tax money off of this? This project is a bad idea. To get tax money out of those businesses, they have to be occupied. I would imagine the rents in those places are probably going to be high. I'd prefer to use the GD on that, but I'll pass on that and try to curtail the language a little bit. But you got to have tax base. 1290 needs to be relaxed to allow more businesses in here that generate taxes. You got to have taxes to pay everybody. And that balloon payment or whatever you want to call it for the pension plan, you got to pay that. You're going to have to have money for that. They're going to... Calpers or Calsters, whichever one it is, they're going to get their money. If they have to put a lien on the Baldwin Park city properties that you own to get it, they will get their money, just like the IRS gets theirs. And anybody that's been audited knows that one. This project is a bad idea. You give away tax credits and all kinds of stuff to the corporations. They get enough tax credits. Why should these people that live here, they have the same problem in San Bernardino too, giving away stuff? Why? The corporations have the money? Let them pay for this stuff. Don't cram that in here. You don't need to build a slum down here. There's no reason for that. Stop thinking of your political futures and where you might go from when you leave Baldwin Park to go somewhere else, and think what's best for these people that are going to be here, the ones that can't move away. Think about the future for the youth, the youth you say you care about. Doesn't look like it. You gave away the Walmart, the biggest corporation, the biggest retailer, and you gave it away down there too. That was the previous administrations, Marlin and the gang and Olivas and the gang. Give away, give away. Stop giving the stuff away. Don't give it away. Let them pay for it.
Mr. Kelly, your time's up.
If that doesn't work with this one, wait until the next one comes with "stop giving the stuff away." I would rather use the other word, but I won't.
Okay, alright, thank you. Appreciate that, Thomas. Thank you.
Seems like we're going backwards on this city councils, okay? The council that was previous, you know, came out with this beautiful project. We're going to do this, we're going to exempt this, you know? We still haven't done an audit on the city, you know? What I think this project is going to bring to downtown is a slum. Especially Mr. Taylor, you're the chief of police. You know the areas, low income. We have a lot of problems in them. Talking about Fraser Park. Over here on Merced in Los Angeles, they're low income. Adele Woods, low income. What do we have there? At least four times, maybe five times a week, we have some police department going over there. You know? It's bad. And we're trying to put this project in front of right here, Baldwin Park. The worst thing we can think about. And then give an extension of nonprofit organization? That's the worst thing we can do. Just like Mr. Luna was saying, 100,000, 600,000 next year. Property value in Baldwin Park has been going up. We've got to take care of the people that live here. They be giving things away. We have to take care, starting with our police department, which they're doing beautiful, you know? They respond to when you call them up. The 4th of July, we took it off because we're giving the money away. Let's do the audit and find out exactly where we're at. Let's do the audit for the past couple of years back, and then define out exactly what was happening. And let's not go backwards. We're going backwards again, okay? We're trying to throw everything away, all the money. That's all I need to say.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, move along with public communication. Good evening, Adams.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, Jason Adams, on behalf of the Baldwin Park Police Association. Just wanted to greet everybody tonight and reaffirm, I know that there's some speakers that have gone before me that are maybe doubtful about what the direction of the community may be. However, from our involvement and our participation and the people that have been, I think wisely put in place by this council to do their jobs, you know, we can't turn a Titanic, you know, around in a moment. We were heading in a direction for a number of years, and some of those projects, while they may not be perfect, they symbolize progress, they symbolize hope, they symbolize enthusiasm. I think that the general employees, if I could speak for the employees of the city, feel for hope and for development and for prosperity in this city and for our jobs. As far as the association's concerned, you know, the type of feelings that we have committed to our work, police officers and serving our community, we're ecstatic that, you know, we've come through a very difficult time with the city, with the budget, with, you know, a sheriff's potential merger or takeover, whatever you want to call it. But what that's done is it's raised an awareness of that this is a fantastic community, and we're very lucky to serve in this community, and we want to participate in this community. And so we wanted to come tonight and just reiterate that to the council and to, you know, encourage them to keep moving forward. Sometimes with change, I think it's the Japanese have a symbol that is for chaos, but it's also the same symbol is used for growth. So with change and with development and with future and hope and prosperity, there's going to be hiccups in the road. And so we look forward to, you know, moving through that, but we feel like we're moving in the same common direction. And reaching into the community, we... I brought a sample, and we're moving forward with our own community newsletter, which we've asked many of the people on the council, many of the department managers, different community groups, and if we haven't got in touch with you, we'd love to give you the opportunity to participate in our newspaper that will be circulating through the city, which is going to be, you know, something that is going to, you know, connect the community in a community newspaper, and we want to do that. We've been participating in the Little League this weekend. We made a donation to that Little League. We'd love to participate. I'm sorry that the wrestlers left, but we'll be making donations and participating there. And so we want to, you know, let the council know and let the city know that we're here, we're committed to moving forward, and we're looking forward to the city passing the budget that's on, you know, in front of them so that we can begin to move forward. It may not be perfect in every aspect, but it's a starting point, and we need to continue to move forward and look forward to the future. This is all about the community that we serve. That's what's going to provide every single one of us the prosperity that we want individually. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Adams. Alrighty, move along with public communication.
Good evening, Council. Greg Tuttle, business owner. It's come to my attention, and I've seen results of it. We have a lot of people that's in the city hall there that's trying to undermine a lot of the things, it's trying to be changes, and it needs to stop. Because the next council meeting I come to, I'll expose the names. This is getting old. We're trying to make changes. The council members, the new ones are trying to make changes. They're trying to help with the leaders over here and the directors. They're getting fought. They're getting stonewalled. It's like old city business, same as usual. This needs to change because we came in here with the help of the council members for one reason, to make change. Not wait six months, not wait a year, not wait two years. Make change now. They did do that by eliminating three leaders and then one other person. That was a big switch. But we have directors that don't want to move. We have directors that are making excuses instead of doing production, and I'm getting real sick and tired of it. And I'm going to start bringing out each and every one of the directors and naming what they're doing and what they're not doing right. And we can start with the Parks and Rec director. If he can't handle one person and be out on stress relief two times, he doesn't need to have that job. He's getting paid significantly over $160,000 a year for. The man is there to handle that stress. If he can't handle that, get out. There's people working in his department that should be released or put into a lower pay scale. We are paying for this. We need to see these peoples pay reduced or they find a new job. You people need to understand, this is a business. This isn't a city that's carte blanche. You pay whatever you want to pay. We have a budget. We need to keep it. Now, this budget that we have before you, I don't agree with it. I know we have to move forward. I know a lot of things were cut out of there just to make it look good, and I know that VJ was very creative and the old council was very creative on how they did the budget because they wanted the sheriffs to come in and expose that the police were costing too much. And I'm proposing tonight that the police better come up with their budget, which they've always said they want, so that we can see and all citizens can see, they have a real budget and what it costs the city. But when we start doing these budget cuts and eliminating officers and eliminating repairs in the city and all this stuff that we're doing and eliminating to show a good budget in the plus, I guarantee you come June for '14 and '15, we're going to be in the negative. We're going to be exactly where we started with this other budget. And it's not the fault of the new council. It's the fault of the old council that created this mess and never cleaned it up. They just kept passing the buck, and the buck stops now. So this is a warning to the directors and warning to everybody that's trying to blockade all this and create all this chaos. I'm coming to town and I'm naming names.
Alright, move along. Anyone else wishing to speak on their public communication?
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, Edwin Borquez. Forty-five-year resident of Baldwin Park my whole life. I want to start by saying that I'm very excited and proud that you approved this project that we're doing here in the downtown area and making Baldwin Park beautiful. You know, having seen some of those plans, the history of these developers in San Luis Obispo and San Diego, that says it all. We want that in Baldwin Park. We want this city to grow, to prosper. We want to think outside the box. And that's really all I want to say. You know, let's keep thinking about the city, making the city more beautiful and doing these types of projects that are going to, you know, inspire our youth and, you know, make a big difference in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Adams. Alright, move along with public communication. Seeing no further interest, I now declare closed. Alrighty, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and go into the agenda.
Mayor?
Yes, sorry about that.
I want to pull number four, please.
Number four? Alright, I will pull number eight.
Mayor, I'd like to pull number nine.
Number nine.
Mayor, I'll pull number three.
Number three. Cruz Baca, you want to pull one or want to pick one? Alrighty, okay. So at this point, I'll move consent calendar with the exception of items number three, four, eight, and nine. That is my motion.
Second.
Any objections? Seeing none, so move. The first one, item number three, approval of splash pad improvement grants, and that's requested by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco.
Actually, that was...
Oh.
Number four?
Yes.
Yes.
Number three.
Number three.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got ahead.
That's fine. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mayor. No, I just wanted to point out to the community that Barnes Park is receiving an improvement from a grant from the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District. A grant that's going to help improve our splash pad that's out there and also a number of other amenities that are out there for the community at that park. And the landscaping will be improved, the fitness zone, walking markers. So just a great improvement for a number of our families that are out there. They use that park, and I think this is a good approach to be able to use grants and work hard to combine a number of grants to be able to do the kinds of improvements that we're seeing. So I look forward to the groundbreaking and when we finish this project. So hopefully, the city manager will keep us informed on this project. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Ricardo Pacheco.
I move approval.
Okay, I'll second. Any objections? Seeing none, so move. Item number four, Councilmember Susan Rubio, summary of ordinance, 1290 and subsequent modifications.
Mayor, I think that it would be best to have them give a presentation on 1290. Right now, we're a little confused as to what we're voting. I think it's out of order. I believe that there's a presentation here to be presented to us, and then we, from what they're recommending, then we move forward with the vote. So if we can allow them to present first, that would be my preference. Thank you.
Sure, sure. Alright, thank you.
So I... Oh, sorry.
Yes, Councilmember, yes?
No, go ahead.
Good, okay. What I want to try and do is simplify the history of 1290 back from when it started. I want to give a brief overview and talk about the subsequent modifications. When was it adopted? In August of 2006. At the time, it was intended to facilitate consideration of and revitalization of the city's defined downtown area. So you're asking, okay, well, what's the downtown area? What we did when we were looking at the boundaries is, number one, we wanted ease of use, and we also wanted to be consistent amongst other documents. So what we did when we looked at the boundaries of 1290 is we took the boundaries of the Sierra Vista project area, two and three, subareas two and three, and then also the central business district project area. And that made it real easy for staff to, you know, keep in mind that everything's consistent. We're not generally looking at a whole brand-new area. So in your staff report with your attachments, I provided three different attachments, two, three, and four. And what I tried to do is I tried to walk through the various zones that we have in the area as part of the RDAO. And in 2006, we had C2 and C1 zones in this area. We had CM zone in this area, and over here, we had a combination of C2 and residential zone. I'm not going to talk about the residential zone tonight. So what did 1290 do? In a nutshell, it promoted retail uses and eliminated all industrial and semi-industrial uses in the zones. So going back, what I want to talk about is I want to talk about one zone tonight and the impact. And the reason why I chose this zone is because this zone is the zone that I have a majority, I'd probably say about 95% of my concerns and questions about. And that is this area over here, which is Subarea Three of Sierra Vista. And the uses in that area include light industrial uses, the county animal control is up here. There's a county maintenance yard here. Maintenance, auto repair, assembly, machine shops, that kind of stuff. And this area accounts for about 35 to 40% of the whole project area. Before 1290, the CM zone allowed all these types of uses, manufacturing, machine shops, light industrial-type uses that you would typically see in the CM zone. After 1290, it went to that. We eliminated all of the industrial and semi-industrial uses, and we ended up with retail uses in the CM zone after 1290 was adopted. Couple years later, 1290 was requested to be modified by Bizno Development. The city had entered into an agreement with Bizno, and as part of their redevelopment plan, they felt that they needed an office in the downtown area to promote their redevelopment and revitalization activities. Well, guess what? We eliminated uses, office uses in the RDAO. So we amended it to allow a very, very specific office use specifically for redevelopment and revitalization. So, then in two thousand and eight, we all know what happened. The economy tanked. Nothing was going anywhere. The city wasn't seeing any really types of new businesses coming in, or any type of new development as the recession lingered on. Toward the end of two thousand and ten, we got a request from Superior Grocery. And at that time, staff was asked to evaluate the different options of twelve ninety. We were given some time, and what we wanted to do is, we wanted to look at the different areas. All of us, all the policymakers, you're all pretty familiar with the Central Business District in that area of the downtown overlay. You know that the Auction Village area is industrial uses, you know Superior Grocery, that area is primarily retail uses. Very different dynamics in those areas. And so, what we wanted to do is, we didn't want to do just a blanket amendment and just allow everything in every zone. So, what we did is, we looked at the different areas. We looked at the Auction Village area, the CM zone. What could we do to that area to help it out? So, what we did, like I said, I'm only looking at the CM zone. What we did is, we added language that would allow assembly establishments, machine shops, upholstery establishment, and offices only within those areas, within that specific area in the CM zone. We also adjusted the other zones too, and did allow for other types of uses within those zones. What else did twelve ninety do? It allowed those uses that are illegal and non-conforming to come in and be legal and get legalized and all that good stuff. And then, we also wrote in there that we would allow businesses to expand, because that was also a concern that we had been seeing. But, last but not least, the last thing that goes into this is our general plan and our zoning code update. Our general plan was last adopted in two thousand and two. After that, we embarked on a comprehensive zoning code and map update, so that our general plan land use map and our zoning map could be consistent, and we finalized that in June of two thousand and twelve. Hopefully, that will help you understand how twelve ninety came about and all the subsequent changes we've made to it. And so, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions?
What I'd like to do, because this topic, I mean, there's a lot of questions, I don't want to spend a city council meeting doing that. What I really asked for was to have a workshop, maybe a month from now, where we could get together, advertise it out to the businesses that are here, because they're not all represented here, so that we could discuss it. But I mean, I appreciate the background you brought, and I know there's a lot more to it, and you have a lot of the institutional history and how we got to here, and you could also help guide us, develop us. And I appreciate a lot of the work that you've done and changes, and I know it's been a headache for you, but we want to have a workshop and have you give more detail. You didn't talk about the residential part of it, and, you know, what we can do. We're also doing, you know, a specific plan at the same time, so we want to make sure that they coincide when we're working with the two. So, if we could have just a workshop with more detail, inviting more of the business owners, I still don't think we'll make that much decisions at that point, because we're doing a specific plan, and we have to coincide with that. So, that would be my request. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would also agree with Councilmember Pacheco in that I think I want it as well to be a smaller venue, where we can actually have dialogue and invite all the businesses who have many concerns over the years, and see if we can all just come to the table and get the concerns and figure out where we move from here. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, Amy, thank you very much for the presentation, even though some of us have heard it many times. And I too would agree to have a workshop and sort of extend it out to maybe even businesses that may or have been thinking of coming into Baldwin Park, because I do believe that if we could work with twelve ninety, there would be a lot of businesses that may come in, or a lot of businesses that would apply for the license.
Yeah, and that's something I did not touch on as part of this. I try and be real, real creative and really, really do my homework. I, you know, because Baldwin Park, we've always made an effort to be business-friendly. We really try and go the extra mile if a business does come in, to really try and see if we can do that, based on past business licenses, what's been there, is there a paper trail we can find that would help a new business come in, and that's something that I didn't even want to go here tonight.
No, that's fine. Thank you. Great presentation.
All right. All right, so, yes, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
And I just want to add to your point, Amy. That's how some of the modifications have occurred, because we wanted to be responsive to existing businesses. Specifically, some of the industrial uses that we had removed initially, and then we decided to go ahead and make the modifications. So, a lot of this has occurred by being responsive, and I want to thank you for your efforts as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Amy. All right, so, at this point, did we make the motion already?
Right. So, my motion would be to bring it back in a month, but in a special workshop by itself, not in a council meeting, that we could maybe have it before the council meeting, or another day, maybe a Monday, that we could all get together and have this workshop. Also, I'd like to ask staff, when you have an item like this, that's for discussion, for further direction of staff, it doesn't belong in the consent calendar, it needs to be put in under officers' reports, so if you guys could remember that. But, the city manager, if you could look at finding a date that all the council members could attend, and also advertise to the business owners within that district to come to this meeting, so we could hear some of their concerns too. Thank you, Mayor.
Also advertising the newspaper, if possible, so that more people can, you could reach out to more people to come out to this particular workshop.
The Tribune?
Yes, the Tribune will be fine. Thank you.
Okay.
And I second Councilmember Pacheco.
The second on the motion. Any objections? Seeing none, so move. Yes, Councilmember.
You said, maybe before council meeting, I would prefer it not be council meeting day, because it's, you know, I want it to be, you know, good dialogue back and forth, and we need time to really discuss this issue. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. The next item that we have is the item number eight, which the adoption of the budget for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, for the city financing authority, housing authority, and successor agency. So, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the finance authority and the housing authority as well. We have concluded with the actual public hearing, and sorry about that, and the successor agency as well. All right, does anyone have any questions? If not, at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and recommend that the city council, finance authority, housing authority, and successor agency approve the proposed fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen budget as presented or amended, and waive further reading. Read by title only and adopt resolution in two thousand and fourteen zero zero six, city FA two thousand and fourteen dash zero zero one, finance authority HA two thousand and fourteen dash zero zero one, housing authority, and SA two thousand and fourteen zero zero one, successor agency. So, that is my motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before we move on this item, I thought we had discussed bringing the item back, so that we could have further discussion.
Yeah, we did.
Yes.
Yes, we did. Yeah, just, I'm glad you brought that up, just general public, that we are going to bring this back and look at it even closer, because there was constables that asked further questions. So, that is my motion. Is there a second?
So, are we continuing the item?
Yes.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll second.
Hold on. I don't think this is continuing.
I'm gonna clear, Mr. Mayor. I thought your mayor, your motion was to approve these budgets.
Yeah, that was my motion.
Okay.
However, I think what we did, let me, remind me someone, then we also agreed that we would bring it back also, because I know you had questions, so...
Yes, I did. Yes, I do have questions.
All righty. So, can we still bring it, but won't that hold up a lot of things that need to go through? Go ahead.
It does hold everything up, Mr. Mayor, and it's well into the year now. This should have been adopted several months ago, but it's certainly up to the council and the council's discretion about whether to approve it now or bring it back.
Mayor, if I may just add that...
Vice Mayor.
I understand a lot of concerns that other council members have that I have about this budget. You know, I think at this point, the numbers are what have been presented to us and what we have to work with, and I think at this point, just to, you know, we could approve this budget as the numbers are, and then, on the next year's budget that we're gonna start literally right after this one, so we could continue to move on, we could make adjustments that we see, or ask for more information to clarify and verify other numbers that we're looking at. And I get that there's a lot of questions about figures and how numbers came up. You know, my concern with the budget that I had asked for last year was to take a look at the actual cost that we were spending, and we were always presented last year under our previous city manager was the budgeted amount, and then never shown the actual amount. So, it was very difficult to determine where you're at in the budget. I've always said that those were being done to show that we were, you know, needing to get rid of our police department to go to sheriffs, because the way the numbers were being presented. Our finance director then showed the figures on a slide, I think it was the last meeting or the last time we had a presentation here, there was a slide that showed the actual expenditures that we had for that year, and the actual, what was budgeted, but we never reached those levels that were spent. So, I think it kind of clarified a lot of the budget, and we're actually at a budget that shows our actual figures where we're at. Now, having said that, yes, there's a lot of work should be done, there's still, we are gonna be short on revenues in the future. There is gonna be a lot of issues and labor negotiations that we have to go to. We need to look for better revenue sources to improve our revenue standing, not just cutting back all the time. So, you know, we need to explore those, but we need to move on to the next year's budget and to do that. And even though you're passing this budget, which literally has, we're in March, April, May, June, three months left to it, you know, we need to close this out. We may not agree with it all, and I'm just doing it so that we can continue to the next budget and look at issues from that standpoint, and then continue to go. So, those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Yes.
Mayor, I do, I still, thank you very much, Craig Graves, for the wonderful explanation last week, but in my mind, I still keep thinking of what the previous council and the previous city manager had gone ahead and approved. Yes, there were a lot of items that were added or taken out, and those items concern me, because we are still in need of them, whether it's the police department, or whether it concerns our public works. However, I don't know if this is the right time, but for the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen budget, I would like to see all the departments to, if they haven't already, give like a needs list to Mr. Graves, so that we will see and know realistically what are the needs, not what do we want, and be unrealistic, what do we need at Public Works? Do we need new vehicles? Do we need them for the police department? What do we need for Parks? All the different departments to give the needs list to you, so that we can come up and not spend a whole year trying to come up with a balanced budget.
I, we just sent out, I just sent out today everything for the fourteen, fifteen to the department heads and the executive team for preparation, and part of the forms that was sent to them was a form specifically for any new or replacement vehicles or equipment, and then also for any services or contracts, and then two other forms dealing with personnel requests for additional personnel and justification, and for any, we have a significant number of part-time employees that are working thirty-eight, thirty-nine hours a week of those positions that potentially should be looked at and made full-time. And so, every department has received their packet, they have approximately three and a half weeks to put things together, and when we present that, we can present what they requested versus where we're at to the council when we do the initial budget presentation the last week of May.
And I just want to add also, that first, about the budget, as we know, the budget pretty much is also no significant changes from the previous one. For one, this one itself, we had a three million dollar deficit, as we know. There was a one-time payout, as I mentioned previously, from Waste Management, which is a million dollars, so that offset a million dollars from that three million dollars. There was nine police officers positions that have been frozen, that were frozen, so that takes out from that particular area. And we did receive also payments from some of our billboards, and we did not make a payment to the trust fund, which is for the retirees. So, there's certain things that were, of course, deleted and not added to be able to demonstrate that this budget has been balanced. But to me, it's really, realistically, it's superficial. And again, we're not West Covina, and they're having major problems as well, or say Downey. Downey's thriving, of course. I mean, we don't have the major car dealerships, major malls where revenue's coming in. What I do have to say and acknowledge, at the previous council, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, Councilmember Susan Rubio, Councilmember Monica Garcia, Councilmember Marlene Garcia, and myself, we were able to raise close to six million dollars in reserve that we still have. Is it close to six million or five million?
Well, at the end of June, with our audited financial statements, it was five-point-one million.
Five-point-one million.
Right.
So, I mean, that's significant, what was raised. So, we need to make sure that we work around that and not use that as a buffer to be able to balance the city's budget itself. We're gonna have to make major, excuse me, we're gonna have to tighten up our belts even much more tighter, and that's important for us. So, yes, we do talk about that we're understaffed, but we have to also look that we're not getting major revenue coming in. That's why we're gonna be talking about potential revenues, the billboard signs that could potentially bring a lot more revenue. We're gonna have to be inventive of many perspectives to be able to build that, because once that five million's gone, people tell right now, I don't see us raising that again in the near future. It's just becoming that much more tough. So, I just want to say that. Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I definitely want to agree with you and with Councilmember Cruz Baca on your comments. I am concerned about this budget that's being proposed. For one, questions that I had at the last meeting regarding cutting the funding to the police department positions, I know that, I know that in past years, there have been funded positions, and then there are actual positions. And a concern in the past, which was expressed by our own police department, was that we had some of the most underfunded, you know, police staffing in the city as compared to the county, and, I mean, there were some extreme examples given, but I won't even go down that road. I do want to express that, so, you know, we're cutting or we're freezing some of these positions, and this really isn't a long-term solution. I understand it's a Band-Aid approach for this budget, and I will consider that, as I was open to it in the past, but I just want to hear from our chief of police that this won't be a trend, because, you know, we owe it to our residents to provide the service levels that they've come to expect from us. And I understand that we've had a challenge in hiring new recruits. Over the last couple of years, it's been a high priority, and we did hire some, I think I want to say about five-plus police officers in the last year. So, it has been a priority, even though it's been difficult to do, and I just don't want to see this as a long-term trend. You know, I can understand doing this one year, but as a long-term trend, it really concerns me, because as you mentioned, Craig, we have some drastically underfunded staffing levels as it is, and I just, I'm concerned that, you know, we keep cutting and cutting and cutting and cutting to the bone, and then after we cut into the bone, what's next? So, I'm just concerned about the long-term impacts. Second, you know, we're not considering the unfunded liability here, and in the past, we've made the decision not to fund that, because we were in a deficit mode, and it was about to the tune of one million dollars per year that we thought, you know, would be the responsible thing to do. And as a constituent pointed out at the last meeting, we're just kicking this down the road, so that our future, you know, our future will have to deal with this. And is that fair? Is it fair that we can't make those tough decisions today? That we have to kick it down to our future, because you know what? It's gonna cost them even more, as we all know, and you're the finance director, so you know this more than I do, but the dollar today is a lot more expensive tomorrow. so you know this more than I do, but the dollar today is a lot more expensive tomorrow. So that's another concern in this budget. Community programs are not being restored, and I know that there's been some talk about how we fudged numbers in the past, and, but what we were doing was we were looking at, okay, what is a structural deficit? As you pointed out, Craig, structural deficit is a result of low revenue base, the impacts of the recession, elimination of redevelopment, increased retirement costs, and already, you know, significant cuts and reductions. So we were addressing that, we were looking at unfunded liabilities, we were looking to restore community programs that have been cut. We were also looking to fund staffing levels, such as our city clerk, our deputy city clerk, excuse me. So, you know, all of that adds up to a number, and as you pointed out in the past, it is a policy direction. So because it is a policy direction, and I'm a policymaker, I can't support the budget that's come before us because I feel like it's really smoke and mirrors, and we're, you know, we need to be more responsible. We're not restoring community programs, we're not restoring service levels in terms of equipment, staffing levels, we're not looking at the trust fund, and I hope that we don't look at our revenue, I mean, our reserves. Because, you know, one incident, as we saw with Temple City and, you know, Pasadena and some of these other smaller, one wind incident took out their reserves, and so I wouldn't want to see that happen to us. So I do continue to have concerns about this budget, and I cannot support it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Susan Rubio.
Sorry. Thank you. Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Graves, having done accounting work. I can appreciate your work, so thank you for working so hard. But I also want to say that I also know that we're approving last year's budget, and coming from Mr. Graves' perspective, you know, we have to, almost in a collision now, we need to figure out a way to move forward, and I know there's a lot of concerns with everyone, and I feel, and I hear your concerns, and I completely understand and I agree with Councilmember Baca, Garcia, Mayor Lozano, and Councilmember Pacheco, but at this point, I think it's in the best interest of the city to approve that budget so then we can move forward and tackle those little issues. At this point, we just need to move forward. There's a lot of things that are held up because it hasn't been approved, and some of our services may suffer, so I will approve, I would like to make that motion to approve the budget, and again, let's just look forward. Once we get this one done, then we start moving into the next one, and then we can really take time to deal with those little minor issues and everyone's concerns. So I don't want to dismiss anybody's valid concerns, but it is time to move forward, and we need to get it done so we can start looking to the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So at this point, let's, anyone else have a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
I would second it.
A second by Vice Mayor. Any objections? See none, so move the budget. All right, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and go over to...
I do object. Did you, did you?
Yes, I did.
Okay, motion and a second, and I object.
Okay, all right. Madam City Clerk, one objection.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
No.
Baca?
No.
Mayor Lozano?
Yes, the motion passes 3-2. All right, so at this point, let's go over to the council, no, where are we?
Actually, Mayor, I had pulled item number nine.
Oh, so, yeah, that's right, sorry about that. Okay, which is the approval of contract for acting executive team manager duties. Yes.
Thank you. And I just want to point out that, you know, Mike Taylor is a good person, and I, this is nothing negative against Mike Taylor. I am going to either abstain or oppose this only because the California Attorney General's Office has issued opinions on conflict of interest and incompatible offices. One opinion explicitly states that holding the offices of police chief and city manager is a conflict, and so I just don't want to have my name attached to this item, and so I'm going to abstain on this item, but, you know, if you guys want to make a motion.
All right, okay, so at this point, yes.
Excuse me, I believe that that particular rule only applies if he is actually on the payroll as the city manager. He's interim right now. Robert, can you clarify that for me?
Yes, Councilmember Baca, Mr. Taylor is not a city manager, and that opinion relates to city managers, and so that opinion is irrelevant to this position. In addition, Mr. Taylor is the interim E-Team manager. It's fundamentally different than a city manager position, and I know that there's no opinion that relates to that, so...
So with that, so if he's not our city manager, are we actively looking for a city manager at this moment, or what is the status with that?
That I don't know, Councilmember.
I can answer that. Just really quickly, we did have a city manager, and we're currently paying off severance pay, and that's going to come to close pretty soon, but we are going to be actively seeking now. We want someone that's qualified, and for that, we need to take our time and do it well. Our E-Team manager currently is in charge of picking up the pieces, so to speak, and he is taking care of the day-to-day operations, but he's just here, again, as E-Team manager and doing a great job of it, so thank you very much. But again, we are seeking someone currently. Thank you.
All right, and then I think we'll probably start in June when the former CEO's contract officially ends, am I correct?
Most likely, yes. Well, Mayor, I think we need to bring that to the, it has to be on the agenda to discuss.
Okay, all right.
So Mayor, my question is, do we have a city manager until June that we can, you know, call city manager?
City, CEO.
We do not have a city manager. We don't have a interim CEO. We have an interim E-Team manager.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to stick with my position, only because you can change the name, but if the role is the same, I'm going to go ahead and abstain from that. Thank you.
Then I move approval.
All right, so there's a motion by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco. Is there a second?
File second.
Second, and one objection, so Madam City Clerk, roll call. Okay, so this, real quick, is to place, just for the audience, the approval of the contract for an acting executive team manager with salary will increase from 1,923.7. So that, that's in the interim, until such time, we begin the process of interviewing for a chief executive officer. All right, so at this point, Madam City Clerk will take roll call.
Mayor, Mayor, Ricardo Pacheco.
Yeah, okay, you're taking a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay. I thought you were going to ask me a question. Okay, yes.
What you answer?
Yes.
Okay, so at this point...
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
We are still on item number nine?
Yes, we are. We're voting.
I am abstaining from that. I will abstain.
You're objecting.
All right, so one abstention. Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead. It's just, it should have gone in the order of the motion maker, the second.
I'm sorry.
My motion is to abstain.
She's abstaining.
That's fine, okay, go ahead.
All right, go ahead to the next one. Go ahead, City Clerk, City Treasurer.
Councilmember Cruz Baca.
Yes.
Councilmember Susan Rubio.
Yes.
Mayor Lozano.
Yes, okay, the motion passes for one.
Mayor, I'm sorry, just for a point of clarification on procedure, the motion maker is asked first to vote, then the one who seconded gets asked second, the objectors the third person, and then the next two.
I apologize.
Oh, no problem.
Fine, that's fine. All right, so at this point...
Mayor, I just also want to point out that I think Vijay made something like $180,000, am I correct? Something around that. So, and because when he was terminated, he continued his contract for six months, that was a part of the agreement.
He wasn't terminated.
Sorry. What is the proper...
Mr. Singh Hall is still employed by the city.
Oh, I'm sorry, still employed by the city.
He's on administrative leave.
Okay, I correct my statement. Therefore, by having Mike Taylor, our CEO, due to both positions, there's actually a savings in that regard, so he's taking both posts. Thank you. As interim.
Just real quickly, let me just clarify that. Our CEO made $180,000, am I correct? $180,000? And so clearly, we don't have a CEO, so currently we have Mike Taylor taking care of the E-Team needs, and so for that, he has put a lot more hours into it, so he's just getting a stipend versus a contract or a salary. It's a stipend to compensate for all that time he's putting in to just take care of, again, the E-Team day-to-day operations. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I do have to correct myself. When I said that we don't have a CEO, we do have one. He's on administrative leave.
All right.
Well, okay, but who's building the questions that a CEO and giving the direction that a CEO would give?
Oh, that, I don't have an opinion about, but I just wanted to correct my statement that we don't have a CEO. We do, he's on administrative leave.
Okay.
All righty, okay, all right, so at this point, we're done with the rest, so at this point, I'll move for adjournment.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. This point, I'd like to open up the, where's my finance? Legal counsel. This place might here. Mike, did you take him? Oh, here it is. All right, this point, I'd like to open up the Finance Authority. We have consent columns, items one and two. Hello?
Second.
A second. Any objections? See none, so move. This point, I'd like to move for adjournment of the Finance Authority.
Mr. Mayor, we already adopted number two, so it was just number one?
Yes. Oh, correction, that is correct, because we, number two has been adopted already. All right, so the motion, second, and no objections. At this point, I'd like to open up the Ballpark Housing Authority, and the only one they'll do is the treasurer's report, and that's my motion. Any objections? Oh, there's three. Okay, all right. Okay, let me also include item number three. We're going to skip two because two, we've already approved. Okay, so open that up. All righty. Okay, so at this point, we adopt a consent, that's my motion, that was seconded, no objections. Then we're going to go over to item number three, which is the Ballpark Housing Authority, fiscal year 2014-15, Streamline Annual Public Housing Agency, PHA Plan. So at this point, thank you, Susan Rallos.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. As required by HUD in April 2010, the Housing Authority submitted its five-year agency plan for fiscal years 2010 through 2014. To continue receiving annual allocations from HUD for public housing and Section 8 Choice Voucher Program, the Ballpark Housing Authority must also submit plans each year. Tonight's public hearing is for the fiscal year 2014-15 Annual Action Plan, which is due to HUD by April 17. As required, the public advisory, I'm sorry, the resident advisory board met, and a public notice was also published to receive public comment. To date, we have not received any comments regarding the plan. The main revisions to this year's plan is the inclusion of new project-based vouchers. At HUD's request, Ballpark Housing agreed to administer 15 project-based vouchers for two existing affordable housing developments, one in the city of Azusa with three units, and the other in Covina with 12 units. The administration of these units did not have any adverse effect on the budget. In fact, HUD has increased Ballpark's budget to include all necessary expense for the housing assistance payments for the 15 units, as well as increase the administrative budget to cover additional expense for the additional duties. The 15 units resulted in the increase of admin budget for the Housing Authority by $30,000 approximately annually. The goals for the program and staff remain as prior years, with an emphasis that Ballpark continues to, continues its excellent compliance with HUD regulations, which has resulted in positive monthly and annual HUD monitoring and audits for the past two years. Meeting this goal will allow our agency to receive the highest rating again with a designation of high-performing agency for three consecutive years, and that's something we're real excited to reach. So I'm available if you have any questions, and the public, if you could open the public hearing as well.
Sure, all right, thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to go and open up the public hearing, so anyone wishing to speak on this specific item, which is the Housing Authority, you're welcome to do so. So I'll take all those in favor. Oppose? You know, interest, I now declare the public hearing closed. Councilmembers, have any questions? If not, I will now go ahead and open, excuse me, I will make the motion to, excuse me, we don't need any. All right, so at this point, I'm going to go ahead and move for adjournment. Any objections? See none, so move.